It's nice.
It's nice to keep it clean. Then somebody's gonna inevitably, they'll mark and be like, there's three minutes. So we can let them in. So they know it's on.
Are you gonna call, you're gonna call busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure. All right, come on in.
Three, four.
There's just three, uh, we convening after closed session, so we are going to take a five minute recess and then we'll be back in here to pick up order, okay? We'll be back in at four fifteen.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call for order. Day is March eighteenth and it is worth a T P M. In attendance is commissioners Hadine, Hadler, McCurry, Gann, Martinez, myself and Ellen Field online. We have county attorney Stephen Stocks, county administrator Mark Kiner and our coordinator Dave Bynum. Like to have you all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the of the United States of America and to requalify the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then we're going to have citizens speak heard. They have three minutes. Um, we'll watch for those if there's any online, we'll get to you in a little bit. If you are here and you want to raise your hand, I can call on you and when you get up, please tell us your full name. You've won here. All right.
Quick note for everyone in the room. Your microphone, when you come up, is directly above you, just speak clearly, it'll hear you.
You can sit here, you can stand at the podium, whatever is most convenient for you.
I would do this. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Deidre Flanagan. I'm the general surgeon at Moab Regional Hospital. I'm also the trauma director at M R H. Uh, and I am also the medical director of Grand County E M S. Um, I'm co-chair of the Utah South Central Trauma Committee and I sit on the Utah State E M S Committee. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, uh, in support of Grand County E M S. That's on the agenda today. Um, as the EMS medical director, I have the privilege of working alongside executive director Andy Smith uh, and his committed and skilled team of medics and administrative staff, you see a whole bunch of them behind me. Both historically and currently, rural EMS agencies have faced challenges of limited resources. They're frequently volunteer organizations without twenty-four seven coverage for their communities. Grand County EMS, on the other hand, has been successfully developed into an outstanding professional agency with uninterrupted service for our community. They're a progressive agency, making sure their protocols and practices stay abreast of current standards. The certification levels that staff allow for advanced level care essentially at all times. They can provide things unavailable at a basic medical service, things like placement of a breathing tube, advanced medications, management of patients on breathing machines, blood transfusions, advanced procedures to deal with traumatic injuries like collapsed lungs. They also train regularly for medical and traumatic emergencies in our steer surroundings includes rope training, uh, river training, mountain training. They run about sixteen hundred calls a year with a coverage area of forty-one hundred square miles. It's bigger than Rhode Island and Delaware put together. Um, this is all done with only five ambulances and thirty-four field providers, which I view as nothing short of amazing. As a trauma director at M R H, I regularly receive patients in the E D from Grand County EMS. I can attest that their professionalism, clinical skills and commitment to teamwork consistently provide better outcomes for our patients. Because we're a critical access hospital, our most acutely ill and injured patients frequently require transfer to a higher level of care. So EMS spends countless hours on the road, uh, safely transporting our patients to where they need to be. I imagine that most all of us here either know someone or have heard of someone who's been positively impacted by the services of Grand County EMS. As a member of several state level committees, I'm lucky to be able to frequently interact with my colleagues all across Utah. Constant refrain I hear is admiration for the quality of the people and the services provided by Grand County EMS. Other agencies, and you may not know this, even in urban areas, can't always provide the same breadth of services that we have here. And we are looked to as a cutting edge leader across the state. Um, due to our position as a gateway community, we certainly want to have the best possible services to care for our visitors. But I am predominantly concerned that we continue to have the best possible services for our local community. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak? And no one online? All right, last chance. Any more comments? Okay. All right, well, we'll keep on going, we're gonna, we don't have any department reports today or agency reports, so I'm gonna go ahead and move along with commission member disclosures. Go ahead, Mike.
I work for the shares.
Okay.
I just had an update on one particular item. I, I haven't talked to, I talked to one or two commissioners. I just want to note that the arches reservation system presented different, uh, conversation that we had previously. Uh, based on that, that it is looking at having a, a survey done. I don't see that any individual commissioners would have a restricted conflict. So I'm just noting that, that was a conversation that was brought up because of the, the scope of this issue is more focused on whether a, a study would be done. Normally I don't, uh, interject or, uh, impose on that, but I just wanted to note that because we had some information, so I know previously Commissioner Hadler and folks at question about Commissioner Martinez, I don't think it rises to the level of restricted conflict on that conversation. Now, there may be something that the commissioners would just want to disclose as less than the level of restricted conflict, but I just want to note that as that had been brought up by citizens.
Sure, and then, in that note, thanks, Stephen. Um, I, I'll just disclose that I, uh, am, uh, part owner of a business that does business in arches nation.
Yep, and I'm, uh, concessionaire of arches and Kingland National Park.
Okay. And then general commissioning ports, so Trish, you okay? We start with you?
Sure. All right. Um, I will try to move really quickly on the third. I had a meeting with Colorado Dark Sky Cooperative. We're continuing, Brandon and myself are continuing to work on our dark sky initiatives. Uh, many people, I think most all of us went to the Kane Creek Preliminary Municipality Meeting on the third. Um, it was, it was standing room only. I thought that the community came with a lot of really valid points via that feasibility study. And I was very proud to see the community there, their force. Um, groundwater, and I went to a meeting at Guissa on the sixth regarding water conservation strategies. It was a great little meeting talking about, you know, how do we incentivize water conservation, education, a couple of big ideas using dry wells and gravel pits as ways to collect water within our aquifer. Um, we did have an affordable housing subcommittee and I canceled that, both Brian and Mike were gone and I was super sick and so I rescheduled that. Um, I went, we had a planning commission meeting on the tenth. The only thing that came through was one of these, um, subdivisions, which was really just, you know, kind of, we just are allowing the public to give input and that was the Rourke subdivision out in Thompson. Um, I missed the conservation district meeting due to illness. Last night I had a fair board meeting. Um, and they, they interviewed a new, they have quite a vibrant board thus far, which is great. They still have a couple of positions to be filled, so if you're interested in being on the fair board. But they disseminated more jobs and they're, they're on the move. I have a couple of pieces of, I, things that I would like put on for future considerations. And these are things that, um, I've been thinking about for a while, I've talked to Stephen about, and I think are very, very important. One, um, I feel like our process for interviewing new department heads and or county admin is kind of hotch podch. I was told at one point that commission was not going to be involved in those processes and that was fine with me, but then kind of finding out that that's not the case, that we have commissioners in on these interview processes, so I really feel like we need to solidify what our policies and procedures are going to be surrounding, um, interviewing new department heads and or county admin in those really important positions. And so I'm gonna put that as, I think we need to have a procedure surrounding that. Whatever the procedure, I don't care, as long as it's consistent, as long as it incorporates, you know, the appropriate folks. But I feel like right now it's a hotch pod, it's fudge and it's fairly inconsistent. Um, the other one that's really becoming quite concerning to me, as I have had a lot, not a few, I'm not sure why people have chosen me, a lot of employees within our county coming to me. Um, I think we really need to define the roles and responsibility, responsibilities of county commissioners. And, and so what that means is I feel that we need to have a brief training for county commissioners. Here's your roles and responsibilities. Here's what your interaction should be with department heads or employees. I also feel like that training should then extend to department heads, so they are very aware of what commissioners should be or not be doing. And then I would then ask that those department heads train their employees. So if employees are having direct interactions with commissioners, directives from commissioners that they're feeling uneasy about, that they understand, you know, what they can do about that, where they can go if they're dissatisfied with that. So those are the two points that I really want to see, um, in the next couple of months-ish. Do you wanna, and I, I've already talked to Stephen about this and.
Sure, I did, I just know, you know, commissioners, uh, the, the commission acts on majority capacity and it's important for commissioners to understand where their, uh, bounds are and for employees and department heads administration office, I think it's a good conversation to have. I think it's a good reminder to have issues like this, be it, you know, open grandma gifts. Uh, rules and responsibilities are almost on a, on a cycle that we just think refreshers and reminders. I'm happy to put the presentation together or with, uh, working with the commission administrator, Mark Kiner. Um, I do think both of those would be good regarding the hiring. I do think it's good practice to understand how we do that, if they're reported, if they're circulated and, and what level of involvement is it, uh, a rubric with metrics? Or is it the final decision with, uh, the commission administrator is the team decision? I think cleaning up those things, I think would help. Um, this has been something that's kind of evolved from going from a council form of government into the commission form of government and tightening up some of those procedures, so I'm, I'm happy to, to help and I do think it's appropriate.
Thank you, thank you, Stephen.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Hadler.
Thanks, Melody. Um, a couple of things, uh, museum board meeting on the fifth. Uh, talked about the, uh, opening of the U ninety-two exhibit. Uh, it was a great opening, lots of people came to it, it's been, uh, continuing to be super successful. Uh, one thing that they noted was there's been lots of positive feedback, especially from kind of the old mining families who've been around and, and they thought that the, the, uh, exhibit was very well done, so kudos to them on that exhibit. If you haven't been to it yet, check it out, it's awesome, such a great, such a great exhibit. Uh, also their, their annual museum, uh, gala is coming up on the third of April. Um, I'd also encourage everyone to buy tickets to that, it's a super fun event, I've been to it the last couple of years and the special guest this year is going to be John Wesley Powell. Okay, also, like Trish said, I, I, I was late for this because of the museum board meeting, but I did attend the, the K C P D public hearing and a few kind of, uh, not so, uh, great, um, I don't know, uh, contentious comments aside, I, I think there's a lot of, uh, very interesting and, uh, intelligent comments about that and why that, um, shouldn't go through. Um, and it was, uh, it was good to see a lot of the community out there, uh, and passionate about that. Uh, so my last week was dominated by, uh, trip walking D C along with Mike and Brian. Um, that was, uh, good, it's the third time that I've been to Washington, D C mostly on behalf of the Umtah project and continuing to ask for funding so that this gets done in a timely manner. I think we're pretty successful in that, it, it's a very obviously uncertain political atmosphere in Washington, D C right now. We're worried about continuing funding, we're looking at two more years of, of, uh, funding to get the project really, uh, tied up and then, and a couple more, a decreased level of spending to, to really kind of tie everything together and then hopefully get it, uh, moved over to the county. There was a continuing resolution passed in lieu of a budget on Friday, and it was really interesting actually being in D C for those days leading up to that and just getting kind of, uh, different representatives and, and real, really staffers tapes on everything that was going on, I, I found that to be pretty fascinating. Um, and it was especially fascinating to be there with, with our lobbyist Cody Stewart, who I think was really helpful in kind of guiding us through a lot of that. And he's kind of an old Washington insider, so, uh, getting his perspective was, was the unique opportunity and I appreciated that. But as part of the continuing resolution, uh, the site is gonna be funded next, or for this next year at the same level as last year, which is sixty-seven million and hopefully we have one, one more year of that where we can really decrease the ask there. Um, along with that, we did, we met with, uh, uh, staffers from all of our delegation and, uh, it looks very positive for our Senator John Curtis to be introducing legislation that should convey the property, uh, back to the county when everything's tied up, hopefully in three or four years. Uh, it looks like he's, uh, willing to legislate your legislation forward in the next, uh, in, in the not too distant future. Um, and for the future consideration, I think this body would, uh, put a letter of support forward at our next meeting, uh, in support of his legislation, so that we can, um, we can, we can show our strong support of that legislation. Uh, we also, i- in addition to the, to the Umtah conversation, we did talk about a few other things in D C, most notably, uh, some public lands issues, we also delivered the letter that we voted on in our last, um, meeting concerning federal workers to, uh, Senator Curtis's office as well as, uh, Senator Kennedy's office. Um, and, um, I guess that, that kind of wraps up my take on, on D C. I'm sure Brian and Mike might have, uh, a few things to add to that. Um, also I wanted to, I've, I've gotten a lot of questions about the, the Mud Springs Trail System, um, because it is, it's scheduled to go forward in the, in the fall, uh, and I'm involved with NICA and there's supposed to be a NICA course involved with that, so, so I've been, uh, hopefully, um, working with Stephen to, uh, finish up the contract with our trail builder. Um, hopefully we'll get that wrapped up really soon because we have a short window for trail building, it's just in the fall, so if we miss this window this year, then it would be a whole nother year. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll avoid that, but I'm really looking forward to this trail system, a lot of people are and, and, and getting that NICA course going and, um, getting a nice trail system to the south of town also. And that's about it for me, thanks.
Uh, update from, uh, Grand County Transportation Special Service District. Uh, we're looking forward, uh, to continuing, uh, work on Jackson Street Phase Two. In speaking with, uh, comment man today a little bit, uh, looking at, actually, I think when we said we were looking to put that right out, uh, back out to bid, uh, to get that work finalized. Um, I mean, everyone would like that to be wrapped up and it's, it seemed to be going for quite a while, so we'd just like to continue it. Uh, same goes for Holly Oak, uh, over there, they're looking to do, uh, curb and sidewalk, uh, both sides of the road. Um, we will be talking, I, I will be coming to your door, uh, here hopefully personally, uh, in the near future to discuss, uh, what the neighborhood actually, uh, would like to see in, in, in with that project. Um, that'll be upcoming here in the near future. Like Jacques said, went back to D C, it was my first time, third time, so it was quite an undertaking. Uh, you never realize how big, uh, our capital buildings are until you have to walk across them a million times, uh, in dress shoes, which is a horrible experience. Uh, so many things went on, I, the main thing I wanted to add with that, uh, with what you explained was, uh, added a, added a meeting, uh, that you guys actually didn't get to go to, uh, with Department of Transportation and with our city councilman Jason Taylor, uh, attended that meeting. Uh, we'll give everyone a little, uh, update on that. Uh, really want to work, uh, with, uh, county attorney's office, uh, before, uh, talking any further on that, but we're, we're looking good in moving a little bit further on that, uh, with our, with some, some projects in our local area. Uh, a future consideration, uh, uh, com admin's office, I really like continuing talks with O S T. They're looking to do a partnership with, uh, Recreation Special Service District on a bunch more panels. Uh, and at, at actually surprising enough, a lower cost than expected. Uh, please reach out to Angie. Uh, I know she's gonna wanna, uh, tell you her spiel on that if she already hasn't, but, uh, that's gonna be coming up in our early April meetings. But I'll, I'll let Jacques and, uh, Brian talk about D C, but it was very fun representing our county. Uh, it was a lot of work. Uh, if anyone thinks when we, uh, travel back, it is not work, uh, they're wrong. Um, we spoke to the entirety, uh, I mean, heavily over U- Utah delegation, representatives, uh, Senator Curtis, and all of their, all of their, uh, staff, I mean, we spoke to, uh, many people, uh, a while back there, but, uh, trying to move local issues forward and it was, it was amazing that our local issues were so talked about at the federal level, it was actually quite amazing to see that, so. That's for me.
Thanks. All right, Commissioner McGann.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, thank you for your diligence and I recognize how much work it is when you go back there, so I appreciate the work that was put into that. Uh, I, uh, it's been a fairly quiet time for me this last couple of weeks. Uh, I did have the homeless coordination local, uh, meeting and oh, geez, I want to sign it. Angie's being on, yeah, okay. Uh, yeah. I just lost my, anyway, I, I see what I could do from memory, cause it just went away. Uh, we had a local homeless coordinating meeting and we will still have money for winter, uh, housing for people up through April. So people that are homeless will have opportunity to get some vouchers for some, uh, hotels on the really, really home nights and that's the way they, uh, get that is through, uh, the more, more, of the cultural center. Is where it's at. Uh, exciting news is, uh, San Juan County now has a person who is working on all this issues, cause, uh, they have, like all counties and states, probably in the nation, we had homeless issues and now San Juan County has, you know, it's, it's, so that is really good news for, uh, San Juan County. Uh, uh, the homeless amount is staying the same, there's real concern because of the funding, the, the lack of funding for domestic violence. It has happened recently, there's, cause some real concern that there's, cause that is our highest population of at risk of being in our county. And but we've had funds in the past that have really helped us get those, uh, people who are experiencing some domestic violence into some type of safe home. And we're at risk of losing that funding, which is really, you know, everyone is. So that, that, that's been, uh, there's, uh, so it was a good meeting, uh, and that was the only meeting I had during this last week. And so that's the end of my presentations, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, thanks. So it's good to be back again, you know, a little bit of a whirlwind. So, um, you know, I, um, after our last commission meeting, I, I haven't had time to prepare anything, like you've been blocking in there. Um, after our last committee meeting, we had a, a subcommittee for the travel council where we went through, um, the goals that the travel council board was hoping. Um, that, that meeting went pretty well. Um, I attended it via Zoom, which was, which was strange being across time zones, I was calling from Berlin and, you know, the connection wasn't great and I was in a big, great, big busy hall with all kinds of tourism stuff happening, it was pretty interesting. Um, the, when I got back, I went to, uh, D C with, uh, Bo Jacques and Mike and, and I think that we really made a really good team um, out there, I think they were able to, to talk, you know, about, about those issues that, that Jacques was talking about. I mean, Umtah is really nice to, to kind of get a little bit more familiarized with that, I mean, I want to make sure that I recommend, uh, uh, recognize Mary for all the work that she has done previously on getting things done. It was, it was great to be able to, to kind of walk in those steps right there. Um, you know, and then there was a couple of other, uh, meetings that I did have as well, I was able to meet with the, uh, the B L M, the director, uh, deputy of the B L M and talk about some issues that we're having up at Cisco, uh, with a right of way issue on a water line. Um, and I think that we're gonna be able to get some progress moving forward on that. It has to do with, uh, an application and, uh, B L M actually recognizing the right of way that we're given. Um, I also was able to meet with the, uh, National Park Service, Kurt Rousch, and, um, we, we, we talked about a couple of things, but the, the big thing that we were able to talk about was something that was called the Explorer Act. And inside the Explorer Act, there was a, um, an idea called the Digital Pass. And the Digital Pass is a way that, so when, when someone comes to our national parks, they will go and they'll pay their fee to buy their national parks pass, right, at the first park? And that park actually keeps those fees right there. Um, I think it's called the, we, uh, Floria, Floria Monstra. Um, but the other parks that they visit don't receive any of those funds, so the idea of the Digital Pass is that when they would actually go to, let's see if they bought their pass at Zion, right? When they do make it to Arches, some of that money would end up back at Arches. Um, that was the idea behind the, uh, the Digital Pass, but it also would make it much more efficient in transition, right? Cause rather than having someone there, you know, checking each person and making sure that they have their permits, they would go there and basically scan these passes. So, um, I was able to talk to them and see if we might be able to get this kind of moved along a little bit further. Uh, because as of right now, it kind of seems like that. Um, I also was able to speak with delegation, um, all of our delegation. And, uh, and the Department of Energy and talk about the Green River Pipeline, um, which was H H one, which is the resolution from. The Senate, um, that got the, um, them recognizing the need for or to convey that pipeline over to Grand County once the, uh, OTR project is finished. So it was nice to basically be able to put that on to people's radar and and see where we are. Um, there was, there's, there's quite a bit of turnover at the Department of Energy right now, and we weren't able to answer our main question was. Can be administrative process or are we gonna have to make this a legislative process? Uh, which would be, which will be kind of interesting to find out, uh, but we did have, we did have great support on it. From all of our delegation and and everybody that we met with was fantastic. Um, you know, one of the things that I will say is I was really surprised how young all of the staff was. Inside his office. I mean, I had no idea that our country was run by.
Right, my 20-year-old.
I mean, the people who are out there getting it done, I mean, they are, they are sharp, but man, I was, I was surprised. Wow, you're the guy I'm meeting with. So it was, it was interesting to do that. It was great to have Cody show us all the little back doors of how to move around out there and get all of our, uh. Running all. Um, while I was out there, I also, uh, zoomed into our TCAB board meeting, um, and I was there for that. There's, or I'm sorry. They've changed their name now to the Moab Office of Tourism. Moab. Uh, Moab Travel Advisory Board, Advisory Board, NTAC, um, is the acronym, the acronym of the. Changing the name of the board. The reason that they did that was to reflect the name of the department change as well. So those two names are are set to match. And then just real quick, a note on the discussion item so that we don't have to pull it off the commission is that, um, that, uh, City of Moab did want to say. That, you know, this is a Grand County Board, so we want to make sure that everybody understands that the flow app. Moab Travel Advisory Board, right, is actually run by Grand County, uh, just so that there's not any confusion like that right there. Um, there was a couple of other things that we discussed on there, but it was a long meeting. It went, it went well through the two hours. Uh, a lot of talk about the goals of both the, uh, the TCAB Board and the department itself. Um, and then we went through the love contract, uh, which we'll be discussing later. Um, there was talk about the billboards that we're going to be putting up. Um, the travel guides and, I mean, it just went on and on. So these guys are really doing a lot of work and. I just want to commend them for all the work that they're putting in there because they're, 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 they're putting in a lot more than they previously had to, you know, they're, they're definitely carrying things on us. And yesterday I went to the Colorado River Authority Board down in, uh, St. George. And that was a really interesting meeting. Um, and right now they're kind of, uh, we heard from Doug Bennett. Um, to start off with, and he was talking about, um, the 20-year plan that St. George has for their water. Um, and it was really interesting to see how he kind of has that all laid out. Uh, he's originally from Las Vegas. And while they're, they're, they're a little bit different from us, I'm sure that there's a lot that we could learn from the way that they're kind of setting some of their, uh, their supply up. It's, it's crazy. So, um, on their 20-year plan, you basically have five little pillars. One of them's. Conservation, the second one is reusing water, uh, the third one is new supply. And then the, uh, fourth one is groundwater, uh, optimization, and then the fifth one is agricultural conservation. Um, but it's interesting to watch their projections, right? Because when you look at their 2024 right now, they're at about 5,000 acre. Uh, and then when you talk about where they project actually to be in 40, 40, 44. Right, 2044, um, they're looking that they're gonna need to be at 45,000, uh, acre feet. So, I mean, it's incredible to see what you would have to do to move from that, from right now at 5,000 acre. Up to 45 and just what kind of plan you would put in place to even start a project like that. Um, I did love one of, uh, uh, Mark Stillson's quotes, which is, is we are not land rich, right? Or I'm sorry. We are not water rich, right? We are land rich here, so water is definitely.
They, Brad, sorry, they expect to grow ninefold in 20 years?
Yeah, that's, that's their projections right now.
I play in the Mississippi.
They actually had some really neat ideas on reusing water. Uh, yeah, so that, that, that there was, there was quite a bit more than just, than just the new supply. You know, when you look at those pillars right there, new supply is actually the third, the third down on their ladder.
Yeah, he came from Vegas. I mean, Vegas, they're probably the leader in, in water conservation, reusing water.
St. George is pretty lucky to have, to have gotten him and start getting this plan going on conservation. Um, second person that spoke was, uh, uh, on Colorado River Law. Um, and some of the negotiations that are happening with Colorado River Compact, which is super interesting. Um, right now you have, uh, you know, basically both the upper and the lower basin submitted their, um, submitted their plans. Um, and the Bureau of Rec took none of the recommendations. Um, so rather than working together, the Upper Basin said, we're gonna put this out, and the Lower Basin said that we're gonna do this, and the Bureau of Rec said. Nah, you guys gotta come back to the table. So it looks like we're gonna have one more opportunity to work together with upper and lower basin states. Uh, try to come up with a deal right now. Um, I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but it was really interesting just to listen to Leo. Um, some of the big things that the Upper Basin's, uh, asking for, right, is compact compliance. Is right now, um, I don't think that they feel that the Lower Basin is actually. Is actually, uh, uh, complying with, with the Colorado, uh, with the compact. Um. See here, uh, we also heard from the Farm Bureau there, um, you know, talking about some of the, uh, uh, agricultural needs of the Colorado River. One of the, the neatest things or one of the real interesting things that I learned from him is that the US is now currently a net importer of food. Right? So I think it was, it changed, that would have been four years ago, uh, went from a net exporter now to a net importer of. Um, which is, it's kind of scary, you know, after having come out of COVID and things like that, right? We have to import our food, so. You know, water for our farms, like that is, is, is critical. Um, Mark Stillson, he gave a great, uh, presentation as well. Um, you know, his, his take on some of the things, um. That are happening right now is the Lower Basin has basically agreed to give up 1.5 million acre feet. They said, we're gonna give up 1.5 million. Uh, and that was based on the fact that we have to deal with engineering problems, uh, power problems, and most importantly, evaporation, right? We suffer the cost of all those, uh, but right now where the, where, where, where we're sitting on with that is anything else that's gonna be cut is gonna be 50/50. So the Lower Basin is not willing to basically just keep giving, um, without the Upper Basin having some skin in. Anyways, uh, that was about it that I had for that. I think that's it. Thanks.
All right, um, Commissioner McPhill, you wanna go?
Sure, glad to. I didn't have a whole lot, being as I'm currently traveling, but I. Want to say I agree with Jacques regarding the museum. Display and the, the interactive display that they have there. I think it's phenomenal, the amount of work that went into that and the. Accreteness of most of it, having grew up in the middle of that era myself, why? It, I thought that that museum did a great job there. And then I did attend the Airport Operators Conference. In St. George, um, spent quite a bit of time with Lochner on future plans out at the airport and different things that they're doing, um. Specifically, I think the most pertinent was the getting some. Plans in place for paving the terminal parking lots. There's a three different phases that they're gonna break that up into, and so they're working on that. There's a future taxiway that will also probably be coming before the. Commission at some point, and, uh, I know it will be on the CIB list, and that's a. Foxtrot taxiway, which goes down between some of the general aviation. Hangars out there, and then I know there's ongoing work currently with the, the. The new taxiway out to the runway, and most of that's being done at night out there, but Lochner is, I'm pretty involved in all of that. And that's really all that I had time for before I took off, so just appreciate, um. Everything that everybody's doing and all the updates. Thank you.
Um, thank you. So I'll go last, um. I did attend the hearing for the King Creek Municipality at Star Hall on March 5th, and it was well, well-attended. It's great to see all the people out there. Um, Thursday, March 6th was the last UACT Legislative Committee, so that was nice finishing up the legislative session. I look forward to. Reconvening the subcommittee that we have here with our board and talking about those bills that were passed and how they affect, um, our county, and so I'll look forward to that. Last Tuesday, I attended the Beacon Advocacy group. You know, they lost almost 50% of their current funding for next year and continuing years. Program, so looking at, um, so the current cost of the program is about 5.5. 500,050, um, and they're, they've lost about half of that. So they're looking at losing programs, losing hours. Um, they have a lot of things planned to get winners into the community as well as fundraisers, so I think that they're a great program. They have. As, as stellar staff, they'll be cut up not, so I would like to, you know, as we move into budgeting at the end of the year, be able to talk about maybe what we can do for Beacon. Um, Wednesday, Wednesday, Mary and I had the agenda review together. Today I attended the EMS Special Service District meeting. Um, we updated bylaws, we talked about our fraud assessment, and I was hoping that one of you guys could share. Um, just how great you are. Um, so I will, but I won't be as good at it. So we, we talked about a, a recent, um. Cardiac arrest that they were able to. Uh, get to and resuscitate and bring to our hospital here, but they needed to be transported. And usually when we transport, they do it with critical care with air transport, no air was available. And so because we have staff that is able to transport a critical care patient, we were able to take that patient to. St. Mary's in bad weather, they didn't have to wait. Um, they were on multiple drips, they were on a, um. Breathing, I don't know if that's the right word for it, um, but they were, uh, a ventilator. And they were able to transport that patient and it's really good turnout for the patient, and we wouldn't be able to do that, uh, without. The great staff that we have and the great training. And I know when I was EMT, we were, we were above board then, and that was quite a long time ago. And so I appreciate all that you guys do. Um, the last thing, as I went to the chamber lunch today, we spoke about the GOEO grants that, that we had training on today. Encourage applicants to apply. We have 26 applicant, or, you know, just ideas out there right now, which is fabulous. And then I want to remind people that on March 24th, uh, Star Hall, our, um, CJC. Has a guest speaker on protecting our children. So you can attend that. And that's all I have. So how about our elected officials reports? Um, Stephen, do you have a report?
Yes. Um, I also attended the feasibility study, public hearing on the preliminary municipality for Kane Springs. I want to thank. Uh, Sean Investa, that they, they put it on, uh, they, everything was great, the audio was great, they made sure, um, that everything was set up. And so I, I think they deserve thanks. Uh, the community did come out, well, well, orson and, uh, shared, and that was. The goal of a public hearing is to make sure that happens. So I appreciate staff, uh, for being able to get that done. Um, attended a few different meetings, TCAB, DV stakeholder, uh, just wanted to know as always that if commissioners or if there are folks that would like me to attend a meeting. More than happy to do so. If you give me a heads up, that's really appreciated. Uh, Commissioners, you all approved a pre-trial services, uh, individual. They're in, they're doing great. It's very helpful. Uh, we were able to give a, a follow-up to the court today. They do appreciate that. Uh, it's a great position to have. It helps. Um, folks be, um, appropriate while they're on release. Uh, there's been a wide amount of requests for additional trainings, be it on Oma Grandma. Gifts, Conflicted Interests, the Topic Explorer. I think I'm probably gonna just set up like a monthly, uh, monthly training, uh, over at Star Hall, Star Hall, and we can go through the topics. I'll try to make them as exciting as I can. Uh, there is as entertaining as watching paint drive, but if we get some fun examples. Uh, then I think I can try to convince folks to come. If I have some money in my budget, maybe I'll bribe people with food. Um, there's a couple different, um, uh, training coming up for, um. The title is a little interesting. It's, uh, Advice from Sex Offenders. It's information about, uh, how sex offenders utilize positions of trust and power, uh, to. Kind of lure kids into terrible, uh, situations. And the person that's gonna be presenting this is a therapist that worked with sex offenders for, I think, three or four decades. Her name's, uh, Cora Jewel Jensen. She'll be presenting on March 24th, 2025. Um, if you work near kids or if you have children. It's a really, really eye-opening, uh, presentation. It's shocking and terrifying, uh, but it's good information to have. The whole, um, the idea is, you know, for a long time, children will, you know, kind of put on the obligation, like if you, you know, something happens to you, then you need to report it. Uh, time and time again, they say that doesn't work, uh, whoever it is that gains their trust. So it's important, these crimes do happen in this community. I think it's really important that, uh, we. Listen to those topics. There are a couple of topics to talk about and listen about. It's easier to just think they don't happen, but they do. Today, we had a sentencing on a child sodomy case. Somebody from this community went to prison. Uh, so these cases do happen. People do come to this community, uh, to prey on children. I hate being the person to let folks know, um, but these things sometimes don't get covered in the paper and. All of us are in positions, and especially the folks in this room, get to see a lot of terrible things that happen in this community, that a lot of people don't think happen in this community. So it's good to be aware, good to be knowledgeable about those things. Uh, I want to thank Com Admin and Commissioner McCandless. Uh, I had complained for a few years about the lack of, uh, push or transparency on the GOEO grants. We had very few applicants. Now to hear the number of applicants that we have, I really appreciate that. I, I really, uh, pounded on. That board before about not putting it out. It was put out. Now we got 24 applications. That's phenomenal. Uh, those are things. That when we continue to push for transparency, uh, those things come out. So that's everything that I got.
All right, um. Katie?
I think all I have to report today is that, um. It's very just the boss is slated to give a quarterly financial report at the next commission meeting. It's all for nothing.
All right, does our Commissioner Minister have a report?
Um, we've started the process of. Getting detailed information and specs on the bathroom remodel that the Moab Information Center, so we are working for that end. Um, also, we have several vacant positions in the county that are listed on the county website. If. If you is interested, we would love to have additional applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. We have an update at the next meeting or something, because I get a lot of questions on. Where we are on the bike path to Spanish Valley. I'm getting questions on that all the time. And where we are on the, uh, building of the pickleball courts at Fribida. Those two things I seem to be off at least a couple, three times a week. So an update on where those projects are would be nice for the next meeting.
All right, so our next agenda item is our presentation by Grand County MS and Smith, Executive Director.
Do you, I wasn't aware until recently that the Commissioner McCandless asked for this to be an action item as well. We can do this all under action if you'd like, or I can speak and then whatever, whatever you folks would like.
I think it'd be great if you speak and then we can ask questions, and then after that, then you can be kind of dismissed and we'll have a discussion here. We'll move on to our next one. And then if we need to call you out of the audience for another question, then that might happen. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, just to give you guys, uh, you folks some history on kind of where we are and and maybe a little bit of why we are where we are. I sent a letter out to, uh, the full commission, kind of giving them the background on the situation and where we are. Essentially, um. This year, uh, you know, we had requested several items from the commission. Um, and you guys were gracious enough to grant more, uh, than than had been previously, so I'm very grateful for that. Um, but, uh, as it turns out, sales tax revenue is down 17% for January. Uh, it's 77% of normal. That's not 17%. I don't do math well. Uh, I'm a high school graduate. Um, and then, um. Uh, and February wasn't a whole lot better. And so with sales tax revenue down, also our billing revenue is down as well. Uh, we're collecting 29 cents on the dollar right now of what we bill. Um, and that's a pretty normal, uh, number. Yeah, so 29 cents, about 30 cents, about 30%. Of what we bill is what we collect. The vast majority of that, I've already written off a million dollars this year at Medicaid. Or Medicare, sorry. Um, and the vast majority of that write-off comes from Medicare. So, um, you know, uh, that, that's the, that's the reality of the numbers that we're dealing with. Um, with all those in mind, uh, I came back to the commission earlier in the year, uh, actually the last year. And you folks graciously agreed to cover the ambulance payment and to help cover the cost to repair the backcountry ambulance. Which is super grateful for. We have made that payment, gave, transferred those funds over. And the backcountry ambulance should be back in commission here, uh, within a couple of weeks. So we're very grateful for that and we'll be able to carry on there. Um, but the way that we are looking. Um but the way that we are looking now is uh our PTIF funds have uh run out. I believe today's number was a hundred and two thousand, um which gets us about a half a month of funding. And so um we're looking at sometime around with estimated income and our savings um without making some drastic changes. Uh we're looking at probably having money through the middle of April um to be able to continue to function. Uh so that's that's the reality of where we are right now. There's a lot of reasons for that and happy to answer questions or or concerns there. Um but we've got to find some funding to move forward or we have to make some significant cuts. And Commissioner McCandless shared the story of that cardiac arrest. I was actually uh sitting in my office with Jen. Those of you probably know Jen. It's a uh does our books and and advises me to not spend money. Um but uh I was sitting in my office with Jen considering which, what to cut. And uh if we were gonna cut an ambulance and not staff and and that that page for that cardiac arrest went out and every ambulance we had was gone. And um that that person will have a great outcome. They're fully neurologically intact and and it's very difficult for you for me to make a decision to cut an ambulance uh for that very reason. Um and so um you know, we're here asking for some more funds to get us through. Uh we do believe that um come July is when our income usually surpasses our expenses. So we know we have this slow time where we have no real money coming in. That's why we rely on our PTIF account. But with the change in our uh billing and everything, it just it has never recovered fully. And so we just continually drain it. And that's that's where we are.
You good for questions, Andy?
Sure.
All right, yeah, Trish, go ahead.
So I guess, Andy, what's the, what are, what are we looking at for your long-term strategies? Like, I've read the letter, but I think it'd be good for the general public to know that, you know, if we put a Band-Aid on this now. You know, I used medical term there. You know, what's the, what's the strategy to 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 get you to a point where we, you know, because I I you you probably understand also if you guys are down in sales tax revenue, the county is gonna be in the same, you know, and we do have savings thanks to to kind of the hard work specifically of Chris Baird. Um and so, you know, we we can help. But but eventually, we're, you know, we're feeling, we're gonna feel the pain out, the pain also. So so kind of just articulating what your long-term strategies are would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as we've kind of laid things out, number one, I think if call volume continues to decline, cutting an ambulance is the right thing to do. Um our call volume is still sixteen percent above twenty nineteen levels. And we've been trying to measure things out to say, look, we have these anomaly years, right, with COVID and everything else, where we have this massive spike in calls. We went up like twenty two percent one year. Um and then we've been slowly going like three to five percent a year down since twenty two. And at some point, that's gonna level off. Um but trying to right-size it, we had to grow quicker than we're able to cut. Um because unless you unless you drop twenty two percent in one year, I can't just cut an ambulance. So I think I put in my letter, our third ambulance ran a hundred and ninety-two calls last year. And so if I have a hundred and ninety-two calls that we're now waiting for ambulances from Green River or Monticello, if they're staffed, remember, I'm the one they're relying on, which we've done everything we can to 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 not respond um unless it's a true emergency situation. Um we've been trying to encourage them to staff themselves, so we're not taking up their time, or they're not taking our time. Until that number comes down below that twenty-two percent, it's really hard to justify cutting one. And so you have to, we had to grow fast. And then now we have to try to decrease slowly until we reach some sort of equilibrium. Um but really, to me, there's three, there's three, three strategies here. Number one, we have a short-term issue that we have to solve. Um whatever that ends up being, uh we have to solve that issue if we want to continue to provide services. Um so we have the short-term issue. We have this medium-term issue, which is we have a couple of years. Um even if we were to go back to the public and we're able to increase the sales tax, um that wouldn't be till twenty twenty-six. And so that wouldn't start collecting until twenty-seven. And so, you know, we'd be into twenty-seven before those funds are here. And so we have this medium-term issue that that we have to deal with over the next year or two. And and the long term for us is finding some sustainable funding or a mix of sustainable funding, um which could include anything, right? We have uh for the House Bill four fifty-six, which could be helpful in the future in funding our services. Uh we have potentially to raise the sales tax. Um we have, you know, there, I think there's a mix of things, but um there also has to be some changes in discussion on how we deal with emergency services in the community and how we fund them as a whole. Um I've come every year and requested and been denied. And it's, you know, I'm not one to stand up here and say people are gonna die. That's, for those of you that know me, you know that's why I left the fire service, because I got sideways with a chief who was threatening his commission, and that's why I came here. Um is because I said, you know, I want a fresh start with an organization where I can build trust and I can do those things to build a sustainable organization. I'm not the guy that's gonna stand up and say people are gonna die, people are gonna die. Um but we do have to have a true conversation
Right.
about how we fund these services going forward.
Okay, okay, Stephen has a question.
What are your, what are your monthly expenses?
Yeah, so we spend two hundred here. Uh so payrolls around ninety-five thousand every twice a month. Uh and then we have cut everything. That's in the second letter. I don't know if you guys have got that. We've cut everything except for our utilities and our expenses that are necessary just to just to respond to calls. So um we're spending about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a month between payroll and expenses.
Then what's your current gap?
Uh fifty grand a month.
Fifty thousand. So if you got a grant of a hundred thousand from the county, that's get you through two months. Two months. When do you, when do you think revenues are anticipated to increase?
Uh we're expecting July, last time we did the numbers. Um is July covers, when we hit July, we have about three or four months where we make more than our expenses. And usually we bank those in order to cover later, so.
No, just scratch me here.
Does anyone else have some questions? Okay, I guess maybe you can, so with the new TRT legislation, what can you break that down a little bit, because I know that
Well, there's the, yeah, yeah, injury for an HB four fifty-six and that, in incorporated in that is a, is a, there's a quarter percent TRT that's collected statewide that go into a fund whereby EMS and SARS and other uh organizations are able to apply for uh grants from the state. Now, our, our, as Brian pointed out in the meeting, our county is is uniquely set up to take advantage of those. But at the same time, uh I'm not sure what the timeline is on that, but I think we're looking at at least
July first is when that
Well, that's
That's when we start collecting, but as far as, as far as loans go, I would assume it'd be at least maybe six months before you could actually see the results of applying for those grants and then them coming back into the into the county, right?
Yeah, all right. Just to continue on that as well, um but not only that, we would be, we'd be best served if we're making sure that we read through the documentation of that as well, right? Because there is a big audit or um audit process. So we'll have to go through and make sure that we're uh documenting where each one of these things, uh each one of the um calls was at. And then as well, we'll have to document where the people were from and then where we paid or not. So we have to, there there will be uh an administration that goes on. And from, I think it was in substitute, that was one of the things that came out, substitute eight on that bill, is when that grant would actually be funded. And I believe it was at the first how that kind of came.
Okay, so Commissioner Winfield?
Yeah, thank you. Um I just have a couple of comments. Andy, I know we've discussed this multiple times. And I know that we're trying to come up with a solution that's long-term here, but and I don't in any way want to infer that there are any problems in your organization, but I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea to have somebody do a dive into your books to help do some kind of a little bit of forensic research to see if there aren't places that we could do some. I don't know, for lack of a better word, cuts or find places that you guys can trim some things. I I know that I'm fully supportive of what you're doing up there. I just can't say that I've looked through your books and think that everything is running perfectly or smoothly as it should. And so uh that's just a suggestion I would have is to have somebody dig into that and somebody that's got some kind of consulting experience that could possibly help you there. And then moving forward, I don't see any way around this situation being something that we're gonna see every year, unless there are some steps taken to increase the tax that supports your organization up there or to cut services. I I'm not going to say that it's my decision. I think it's a decision that we're all gonna have to jointly make, but I I think that we've got to do some hard looking at what the long-term solution is here. And I'm certainly supportive of trying to help you get through the short-term part of this, but I think there's a lot of different avenues that we could be looking at here to make sure that we get you through this and then don't see it again next year.
So thank, thank you, Commissioner Winfield. Um we we have at, actually at your, at your asking, uh when I first uh talked with you about it, we have had two separate organi- uh two separate people uh look at our books. Um one's the previous CFO of Redtail Aviation. He took a deep dive into our books, looking at all of our audit reports and everything and hi- his response to us was, you run a lean ship. And I said, yeah, we do. Um we really do. But my head, with my head, and I appreciate the suggestion, because when, when your head's always in the same kind of financing, you miss things. And so having outside people come in and look at our books has been actually really eye-opening. Um and so we we have done that. We we still have another gentleman who is looking through our books right now, so we're anxious to hear back from him. And then I I I agree with Commissioner Winfield. For me, this is, this is a, uh you know, we're at the end of that ten-year period with the tax. When we put it in place, we knew it would get us through ten years. Here we are. And and we should, probably should have made some uh changes earlier um with funding and figuring that out. Um but we were also really hopeful with the call volume increase. We did make more money temporarily. So we're like, oh, we can hold off another year. We can hold off another year. And now as the call lines continue to go down, it's kind of where we are. So I do, I appreciate that. And I agree with Commissioner Winfield. It's a, it's a discussion on where do we find the money moving forward or what services do we cut? That's where we are.
All right, Brian had a comment.
So I just had some questions on, so when you came to the commission, is it in December?
Yes, sir.
Then you came here. Um what was the original uh short that you were forecasting?
Well, we, um so that's a good question. I'd have to look back at the documents. I know my original request was three fifty plus the original PTIF amount, which we had been receiving hundred and fifty-four, hundred and seventy-four. Um and then we were going fifty-fifty with PIL, not, sorry, what did I say? Oh, gosh, uh PIL money um of a hundred and seventy-four, which had always been kind of, since we became a district, had been allocated. Um and so our our original short was somewhere in that timeframe, but we we weren't expecting January to be seventeen percent lower on our sales tax. That's twenty-eight thousand dollars. I think it was lower than than our expectation. And and then uh so that that's where we're kind of running into more of an issue. I thought we'd last through June um with the funding that we had received from you guys. And then when we did updated numbers, Jen came back like, no, it's it's looking like it's April one-ish, so.
Ryan, so you're looking at at a total of three hundred right now that you're thinking that you're gonna be short?
Three. We believe three, the three fifty-five would get us through the year is our belief. Based on the numbers right now. And uh town has felt, I don't know if you guys were around this weekend, it was pretty busy. Um our call volume may recovered quite a bit. We're up this month, and so we're hoping there are some positive signs coming, so.
All right, John. I guess this is partially a question for Gay, where 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 do we pull that three fifty-five? If we were to take to grant that much, just out of the, out of our reserves?
Uh yeah, uh general fund reserves, uh end of tw- twenty-four sat at uh ten point six million roughly. Uh of course, that's you know, that's a, there's a a lot of needs around the county and that we have facility-wise, so you know, it's an unending piggy bank. There could be a look at the the latest TRT legislation that passed. Those are my initial thoughts.
I think that latest TRT, I mean, uh actually, I think we're looking at a shortfall compared to previous TRT, the way that that bill landed as far as, yeah, the reallocation of funds, correct?
Yeah, as as it relates to the, yeah, that relates to the mitigation side. That's correct.
Yeah. Considering, uh you know, part of that, Andy, that if, you know, not not full three fifty-five, but maybe, you know, a hundred thousand and then have this conversation again if necessary in three months or whatever, um. Yeah, I think we're
Go ahead, like Andy. It, yeah, if we're gonna, do you wanna go ahead and move into the action items? That was on Dejoc.
Oh, it's up, it's up to you.
Yeah, do you have more questions for Andy?
No.
Yeah, Commissioner Winfield, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm in agreement. I think we need to move into an action item. I um think that with Andy's you know, concerns here and with his saying that it's gonna be twenty twenty-seven before he could implement and start receiving an increased tax, if that's the direction he chooses to go. I think that even whatever the dollar amount we agree upon today, I think that there's gotta be some pretty hard decisions made, Andy, moving forward before you're gonna be receiving that tax so that we're not in this position again. And I I just, I don't know where those cuts or places that you can start looking at, but I I think that we've gotta get real serious between now and when that tax implement could go into place for you.
All right, uh Fisher McGinn.
Uh some information I'd like to have is uh with the call volume, how, what percentage of your calls are in city? Do you have estimate?
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's, you know,
Yep.
the county keeps funding this and yet it is a uh a service to the issues by both the city and the county. And
Yeah.
I I know there's real resistance from the city. I've heard it, but I do think that we need to ask that person for help if especially if this, we're not gonna send you relief of that twelve point seven, because the county can even beyond for a lot. And I know when we chose to move to a district, there was a, was in, one of the reasons we did was we were hoping the 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 thought from this was that uh it would become more sustainable. That the the EMS would become more sustainable, and that doesn't seem to be happening. And so it's a concern. And but I do think we need to look at this, become pretty creative in how we look at finding extra bodies. Like I mentioned to you that, uh you know, talking to the uh hospital about having something set up at uh when people go into the emergency room, because when the ambulance is safe, it's when people feel very, very generous and they're very, very happy. I think asking for donations from the people there, if possible, who might be able to. Because it's then they leave and they they get the bill and then they go, well, we don't wanna pay this. And then it turns into a circular thing. So I'd be asking them for the payment at the point of service, if possible, when they're feeling grateful, we might be more likely to get it.
Just, just to uh address some of those concerns, I think um oh boy, uh I think that uh I think if we had stuck really closely to the business plan, you would see a very different service today. And um our business plan was pretty detailed about the funding that was needed and and you know, it never really happened. I ever, I never really pushed that hard. Um and the other thing I think is really important to understand is that the the district has done leaps and bounds uh for our staff. Um because of this way we operate, we have to have very flexible rules on scheduling and stuff. And the county could never bend enough to make it feasible or doable. So when we became a district, it was very uh very good. The district board's very good at looking out for our staff.
I didn't, I didn't mean to say I thought we shouldn't have gotten to it. I I that was not my intent for my comment. It's just that that, you know, it didn't, it hasn't panned out in the manner in which it was predicted to pan out when the district was born.
Well, I I and I I agree with your city participation discussion. Jason and I had the cops called on us the other day because we were yelling at a, uh where were we? Crowberg, Crowberg, up in Salt Lake, uh, because I, I feel the same way. And I can't fight that battle between the city and the county. I'm in the middle of it and. Every time I talk to them, they're like, deal with the county. Every time I talk to the county, they're like, deal with the city. It's like, where do I do?
It might be just have to have a joint.
Like we all need to sit down.
We need to have a joint city county meeting on some fifth Tuesday. And say, you know, we have an emergency here and it can't be, we have to both shoulder some pressure.
All right, Commissioner McCurdy.
I think, uh, should learn some of that responsibility, uh, should look towards San Juan County also and.
Oh, yeah, we should do.
And towards Green River side. There we go.
I agree with you.
I love to help you on those conversations. I, I know in just what we said already, uh, city and us will be talking. Um, in that. In that you have my full support for the three hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars being asked for. Because I would never want to be the deciding factor in ensuring, to ensure uninterrupted, uninterrupted services in any form or manner. Uh, I use you guys a lot, uh. Had some elderly family that passed, but you guys always showed up and I called you a lot. Uh. I know that I'm not the only community member that, uh, both hates that price tag. And knows why it's there, so.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, are we ready to make it a motion? Are we? Yeah, I, I think we're good. Any more questions from Andy? That was on my last. Uh, Commissioner Winfield, you have a question?
Uh, no, I was actually gonna make the motion.
Wait for one second. All right, second. Thank you, Andy.
Okay, well, you might, you guys might not like my mo- motion, so, so I'm just gonna make it.
Okay, so one more second, we're gonna move into that.
We need to move into general business action items.
Okay.
Consideration of approval.
All right, we're moving into general business action items, discuss, discussion and consideration of approval. So our first, um, action item is the consideration of funding requests from Grand County EMS.
I'll make.
Um, I think Bill has had a, maybe before Trish's motion, so go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'm gonna make the motion that we support the EMS with the full three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
And I have a second, Commissioner McCurdy. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss. My thought was, um, and I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. But my other thought was we fund them at like seventy-five percent, which was like two sixty-six, I had it up here in a second. Two sixty-six, five oh three, and that feasibly they can use that to parlay talking to the city. Or talking to San Juan County to, to do the final match on that. And I think that that's a really good. Good, you know, I mean, that's a good compromise. Seventy, seventy-five percent is the bulk of it. And, and maybe it would get these other entities invested at a certain level of, of coming to the table. Just my thought. But I'm, I'm not making it a minute motion. I'm fine with whatever, but that was kind of my initial thought.
All right, Commissioner McCurdy.
In my second to that motion, this goes to you, Andy, uh, one hundred percent, I want. Uh, stats coming from, how many, uh, percentage calls go out to San Juan County? Same with Green River, same to city, same to county. I, I, if I'm gonna help in this fight. I need to have that information to know what, what the numbers we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Okay, we go Brian, Bill and then Mary.
Yeah, thanks, you know, um. The reason I had to ask those questions is, you know, I believe that when you spoke earlier in December, you said that we're gonna have a shortfall. Right? We knew this was coming. And so kind of against the idea of just funding partial, right? Let's, 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 let's stop this right now. I think that in our budgeting process, you know, we should be funding essential services first. Um, that's, that's right where we need to be at. We fund our essential services. And then we're gonna have to figure out, and I think we're gonna have to take the cuts out of somewhere else. Um, I'm more than willing to be involved in those conversations and where those cuts have, we're gonna have to come from. But, you know, I think that we need to make sure that we're funding our essential services. Um, now as to how we get San Juan County and those discussions with the city, I think that's, that's a fantastic idea. Uh, Mike, that was a great point that San Juan's not inside of this. Um, I think that that's, that's, that's a round table that we need to start sitting down into. Um, you know, I, I, I feel for everybody here, but it's, you know, when we deal with these kind of situations, it's like we are subsidizing the federal government. Right? These guys are taking care of federal lands all over the place and we're not getting any support from it. Um, you know, the pill that we do receive is just, it's not enough cover the services that we have to cover. Um, so, you know, um, you know, like Mary was talking about being creative, we're gonna have to come up with creative ideas. I do think that this, uh, the new T R T bill does have some, some merit into providing some of that funding right there. Um, and like I had said earlier, I think it's really important, both our search and rescue and our EMS really study that. So that we are set this year. So when we're able to drop those applications, we're first in line. Uh, because right now, the way that it's set, um, it's kind of set off based off of population, right? Of people who get it and we do have a smaller population, uh, as compared to the other counties. Um, and then second, it's based on need, right? So if we have that big long list of, hey, look, this is. I think that we'll be able to hopefully get to the head of that line right there. And maybe this would be a start to a longer term solution. Um, also the idea of that tax rate there, the, the bill that had come through. I know that it's, it seems like it's a little bit scary to walk away from something that we already have guaranteed. But I would imagine that if you brought this tax right here to the community, right, the community will vote with us, right? They're gonna want to keep those essential services. So I know that if we do walk away from this, right, we're not on that guaranteed. You know, it's just a, a check at the box anymore, but it would have to come up again. But I do think that the community would vote for you, um, on this tax rate.
Okay, and Commissioner Winfield?
Yeah, I, I wanna go back to Mary's comments, you know, I agree with her that. This conversation really isn't Andy's to be having with the city. I mean, he should certainly be a part of it, but I think it's time that. That we get these things worked out so that those shouting matches or whatever you had with a council member aren't happening. We've got a good, solid working relationship between the city and the county. And, and I think that this is just another piece that we need to put in the future, moving forward. To kind of get these things worked out to where everybody's on the same page, so. And also, Trish, I appreciate your comments and the fact that you're not countering, but I, I do un- understand the, the need here. Andy, to, to get really creative and. And, and to be serious about making this work to get us through the, the year. But also then to have a plan in place within the next couple of months for next year, rather than. Coming back for another emergency meeting and an emergency request. I would just like to be a little more proactive if possible.
Thank you. And Mary, question for Andy again. Do we have an agreement with Colorado for ambulance service near, like, the border?
We do.
Pay them?
No.
No, what, it's just.
This, um, this has been misunderstood, by the way, by the commission, by me, by a lot of people for many, many years. So historically, ambulance coverage agreements have not, because. What's that?
Oh, I just remembered something.
Oh, no, you're fine. Cause the county, there's actually two different agreements with Lower Valley. The county has one for fire protection, which is completely separate than the ambulance agreement that we have. And the reason being is because historically we've built a patient for the revenue, right? So if Colorado comes into Moab on a car accident, comes onto I seventy, they cover all the way to mile marker two fourteen for us on I seventy. They build a patient for that response. What's changed in the last ten years is insurance. Insurance refuses to pay the bill. Everybody's moved to high deductible plans, um, and more patients. We went from a thirty percent Medicare population. To about a forty or fifty percent Medicare population and they're the worst payer. And so, and so what's changed in the last few years is everybody's trying to get money now for ambulance agreements, because it doesn't pay for the service anymore. Where it used to in the past. So that's why our agreement with San Juan doesn't have dollars built in, our agreement with every county doesn't. Because historically, we've never had to worry about it because we build a patient for the revenue. That's changing. So that's why everybody's asking now for agreements with dollars attached and we'll have to address it with San Juan County. We respond a lot to San Juan County.
Yeah, and not doing much in Emery.
Uh, at times, uh, it's been a little low recently, which is good. We like not having to go, so, but yeah.
Thank you, Andy. I'm Jock and I'm in the speaking in all the interest.
Thanks. I just wanted to say, um, as, as Brian said, uh, you know, I don't disagree with this, but, uh, fund essential services first. We, we sat here for a long time and contemplated the, uh, the budget asks last December. And where we landed, I think, I think Mike and Bill and I were actually on the same page as far as funding EMS. It's a lot easier to fund a standalone ask like this than it is to, to look at an entire budget. And, uh, holistically, and try to meter out what funds we have here and there. And, and that's, I think that's an entirely different process. Again, I'm not against this, but, um. I don't think it's an ideal way to continue and, um, yeah, I. I definitely think that, that, that addressing this when we are doing our budgeting and, and, uh. And going forward in that direction is, is better way to go about it.
Absolutely, you know, but I think that funding the shortfall, I don't think that worrying about if we're gonna have to cut ambulances. At this time is the best for our director to be using his time when he can be planning for next year. He, when he comes to us with budget asks, they're doing budget season and hopefully we'll have those meetings with the city prior to that. Um, that we can make some adjustments for next year. But, uh, you know, I, I'm in favor of funding it in the full amount. I think that it's an essential service and then our taxpayers pay money. So that, that when they call nine one one, that ambulance or police show up. I think it's super important. Um, go ahead, Trish.
Okay, um, just a couple of things and, and then I think we're probably close to a vote. Yeah, Mike, yeah, okay, so, um. I think we're all aware, this is one of many asks that are coming down the pike. I've, I mean, I know other entities right now that are having shortfalls, so I think we just need to be very cognizant of our reserves. Um, I, I'm just gonna state that. It's, it's, we've got more to come. Um, I think, you know, the reason I made that proposal is really to just push that agenda. It's not because I don't wanna fund you, it's just, you know what I mean? So please, please don't lambaste me when you guys all leave. I mean, it was really to kind of push this agenda, getting these other entities to come to the table. Um, and, and Andy, whatever you need to do that, you need one of the commissioners or multiple commissioners to appear to help you with that. And then, yeah, I think we're pretty retro.
Go ahead, Mike.
Final question for you. Hmm, the, uh. Hopeful tax increase, uh, coming up. You said previous tax increase was expected over a ten year period?
Yeah, so when, when we sat down and when we went to the voters with the tax in twenty sixteen. The first sales tax, we knew that that tax was only in place for ten years and we knew that that funding would only last us ten years. So we, you know, in a way, this is kind of the decision point regardless, um, because of the ten year.
Is that, it was one percent, right?
Half of.
Half a percent.
We should have won.
Okay, is that, is that half of a percent expected to overcome the current shortfall? And expected nine more years?
So, a, a one, that's a, that's a really valid question and we've actually been doing a lot of the math, um, to go back and say, okay. If this goes to one percent, where, what's that tax, that tax's trajectory? I'm sorry, my lips are really. What is the tax's trajectory? And then how does that look for funding us over time?
Okay.
And, uh, again, gets us what we believe is a solid ten years.
Okay.
So for that period of tax, we believe that would fund it.
Well, I, I really wanna, uh, say, getting that, that word out, uh, to my constituents. That half a percent is expected to go ten years running. That's, but. Real good thing saying about a tax increase. No one likes tax increases, right? But that, that is good information for me to pass on.
Yeah, yes.
I just wanna note things for the commission. Commission can choose to vote however they would like. I'm just giving a couple of quick thoughts. Um, if there's a fifty thousand dollar shortfall monthly, um, there's about four months or five months until bills start coming in. To a point where they may, might start meeting their expectations. That might be something the commission may consider breaking up the payment that would require, uh, uh, Mr. Smith to come back. To the commission and ask again. I just note that once the money's out, the money's, uh, handed to them, there's no downside. There, there's nothing wrong with that. But I just note, maybe doing a moderated step, commission can say, no, thanks, we wanna give the full amount. If we wanna give the full amount, the suggested motion was five thousand dollars more than what they were asking. Uh, so it was three fifty-five and they're requesting three fifty. Either way, if, if we're good with. If we wanna give them the full amount, we can give them the full amount. If we wanna give them five thousand more, we can do that. If we wanna break it up. Um, I just note that those are some items to consider, but my thoughts were that you might choose to, to do a portion of the payments. I, I would note that probably, um, other entities are watching the circumstance and we might think of another special service district that separated. Um, that other folks might come back for, for money and so. Once we give it out, it, it is gone and we just wanna make sure if there, if there are concerns and we want to follow up. Um, having a, a reason for them to come back to us and ask for additional helpings is fine. So I just wanted to note that for the commissioners.
And Brian had one more question.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So would that be in twenty twenty-five? That, that's eligible to go on the ballot or would it? Uh, it would be in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, without doing a special election, which I don't think, last time we talked, with around twenty or thirty.
Twenty-six.
All right, twenty-six. Twenty-six.
So, that's his hand up and then that's it. Last one. Um, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, and so I made my motion based off of the number in Andy's letter. Um, so I, if it needs to be changed to the three fifty number, I would have to, um, have Andy weigh in on that. And then to further Stephen's comments, I do think that it's important. That the EMS doesn't just take this money and throw it in to their account. That, that they, there's some accountability here, Andy, and that if your income does come up. There's, I don't believe any statute against returning excess funds. So I, I would hope that there's a, a real close eye on this moving forward and that. That, that you're just real careful with the fact that we, that we are trying to meet this need and we wanna be good partners with you. And then just weigh in if you would, if I need to change that dollar amount.
Um, I, I, I think I mixed it up. So you guys have two letters from me. In one, it's three fifty and one, it's three fifty-five. Um, the three fifty was the original request, that's.
Okay, I, I can amend that motion. Is it three hundred and fifty thousand exactly or is there some dollars with it?
Three thirty-eight, three fifty-three, three eight.
Okay, so let's amend that motion for, um, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bill amended and then Brian seconded. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call for a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's me now, Miss.
Nope, it's actually, I'm, I'm abstaining, Millie. I didn't see.
Back your hands up. Okay, and so that was, um, Heather abstaining, but it passed, motion passed.
If the motion passes six to eleven, or six to zero with Commissioner Hadler abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy. All right, our next agenda item is the award, award twenty-five commercial property appraisal contract for twenty twenty-five.
Hello, so this is, was, um, it was RFQ that we put out, our, our detailed review. On our new role, um, for our commercial properties. We got two people that submitted bids. We had one from the appraisers, A, out of Provo, Utah. And the Cook group out of, where they're on a quality top. And, um, so we took this to a committee and the committee reviewed the bids and. The appraisers were about fifteen thousand dollars cheaper than the Cook group. And so the committee decided that we would, um. Award the contract to the appraisers.
Is, is that a different group than, than we've used for appraisals in the past, Debbie?
The appraisers are the ones that we have used.
So that, so it'd be continuing with the same group?
Commissioner McCurdy, did you have a comment?
Jock stole it.
Um, and Miss, uh, Commissioner Winfield?
Boy, I, I would, um, make the motion that we increase this contract and pay for the higher bid. Considering the amount of problems that we've had with this appraisal service with the last few years. I, um. I would hope that we would take a good, hard look at it, the. Discrepancies that have come up in the past with this service ha- have been enough to warrant looking at spending. A little bit more money to get a better service in here. I, I don't know what other commissioners have to say about it, but I'm extremely concerned if we. I I don't know what other commissioners have to say about it, but I'm extremely concerned if we continue on with the same service we've been getting. We're gonna continue on with the same problems for our community, and then we're faced with the fact that they're in. The commission breathing down our necks, wondering why, so let's look at this and see about. Seeing if we can't get a little different service from somebody, if that's an option.
Okay, um, I mean, just can we pay more than necessarily mean that get a better service? Uh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I I actually would tend to agree with Bill on this, but I I'm sorry, it was probably in the packet and I didn't, I wasn't able to find it, Debbie. But what was the difference between the two um uh, two bids?
Well, it's about fifteen thousand between the two of them. Um, the only thing that concerned me with the Cook's group was during their bid. They just bid that it would be an additional two thousand dollars for, to do an income approach for each property. So we're not sure if that was for each property or if that was just for a commercial overall. They didn't specify that. So I mean, that could run way up from there.
Be massive.
Yeah, because we're looking at a thousand, a thousand ninety properties.
Sure.
So if we're, if he does an income approach on a thousand ninety extra properties, charges two thousand dollars each.
Or a thousand dollars.
It could be more money.
Would it be, how, how could we clarify that with them uh soon?
We have contact.
Right, right.
All right, um, Commissioner McCready.
Sean, I'll still have everything for me.
He's stealing all your stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just sitting here now.
Sir McGann, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to know if, you know, which way it was going to go, because it would totally be enough to to mention. You know, people were pretty unhappy with the last, you know, assessments, you know, I think in a sense. If it's not going to be a huge amount, like you said, if we found about that clarified. I think it would be a good idea to go with a different company to see if we're getting the same results and so it's. Right now, we we don't know. Or there was a huge outcry.
All right, did you wanna make a motion to that?
Well, I don't think we can take a motion. I don't, I didn't even decide until we have that clarified. I don't know, it does need to be something that you could be done with line if we could make a motion with pending clarification. Or if we could postpone that, that's, but I'm not sure.
Can I? And I don't disagree that having somebody else come in, bite, we might get something new eyes on it, we might be different. The only thing is, is that because we're so far into the year, um, this has to be done by May twenty-second. The Cook Group doesn't have any of our information, so they don't have any of our parcel information, our land information, the other group does. Um, Bill, where you're concerned about Gordon and his group, I know it won't be Gordon that's coming in to do this stuff, it'll be Jeff. Um, so I don't think we have problems with him. Um, Gordon's kind of turned everything over to him, and and so it would just be, they'll be just running in office. And I understand your concern. I'm not, I'm not downplaying that at all, but I just, we're so far into the year that I don't know that. The Cook Groups know exactly what they're coming in to do.
Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah, I I do. I'm looking at Mr. Cook's letter here, and maybe this is questions for Stephen to look into. But he does say, I, David Cook, am willing to enter into a contract with Grand County. And thus accept the county's terms and conditions and out, as outlined in the RFP. So I'm not sure if our RFP would hold up enough. To answer the questions that Debbie had, whether he was asking for another two thousand dollars of property or not. Or I also wonder if then we shouldn't go back and ask him for some clarification. Um, I I think that we've got time to move this to the next meeting if we wanna take that route. So that we can make the proper decision on how best to handle this and. I, Debbie, to your comments, I did sit in on a few of the meetings with Jeff as well. And I I'm not totally sure that there is a whole lot of difference between him and Mr. Low, and I don't know that it's even. That with them as individuals, I'm, I'm not saying that they're doing a bad job. I'm just saying that there was so much public outcry. That I think that it would benefit all of us to to just let this. Move forward in some other hands, and and we, it is, as Melody said, not necessarily meaning we're gonna get a better job. We're taking a chance here. But we know the performance that we've received in the past. And I I just think we've gotta do a little bit better PR work, which is outside of the decision we have to make right here. That we we have to make sure that the public. Understands what's coming down the road, maybe a little bit ahead of time when we're doing these appraisals that happen every five years rather than yearly. So it it's kind of a multi-pronged problem in my mind. Thank you.
And Stephen?
So for commissioners, it uh, to look at these contracts, so on invoice, the Appraisers Group, Inc., quote, look at page eleven. It lists out there what they're gonna charge, and then note they're also going to charge a hundred and fifty dollars hourly for representation at the Board of Evilization. Um, that's information for you. And then on page twenty-one of the Cook Group quote, there, they're going to bill. Uh, their hourly is three hundred dollars an hour um for their representation at the tax appeal. Um, so these are estimates. Their estimate on the bottom on that page twenty-one, it says for the Cook Group quote, says the estimate cost total is seventy-five to a hundred thousand, likely near eighty-five thousand. It's gonna be based on whatever model they put forward, whatever hours they bill us. So that's something to note. I don't like the language on some of it, that I don't know if it's just two thousand dollars total, because it says two thousand, seven, two thousand additional for sales. What is that per individual sale? It's two thousand dollars generally if there are sales, same with two thousand dollars additional for income. Some of these things are are left a little bit vague, and I would assume, you know, if you guys are cutting the check, that it's gonna be the higher, higher price. It's probably gonna be a price per. Um, so I think getting uh confirmation on that, they're generally going to be estimates, just like in construction and everything else. They're not gonna give us an exact total, uh, but those are different amounts, especially the three hundred dollars an hour. I would also uh know that we do have quite a few number of appeals. Um, and so understand that on the backend, there are going to be appeals, and one thing I think would be helpful is um. Although people may have been unsatisfied with evaluations, I I don't think that there was a mass, a a mass amounts of, that that we lost at the tax commission on a ton of them. Um, like prosecution, uh, the assessor's job at times is unpopular. People are gonna be generally unhappy. Um. I just know that 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 does come with the territory, and so I I did wanna note that. Uh, there haven't been as many. There have been a number of appeals this year, but those appeals didn't end up in the favor of those individuals. Even though we passed them on to the tax commission, uh, they were upheld, or there were modest uh, modest changes. Um, just noting that for you folks, and I I do think that um, these are quotes, you'll have to understand that there is a range. Uh, that's, I I don't know, one, one question I'd have for Debbie probably is, how many hours do you think?
How about?
Hours that the, that um, your appraiser spent with you on your appeals? Because that's a hard, that's double, the amount between the two, it's double. One's charging one fifty, the other's charging three hundred.
I don't have that right.
Okay.
It was a lot. I mean, we had to cover it, probably saying at least two hundred hours.
Uh, just noting that for you folks.
Okay, we're gonna go to Bill, and then you, Mike.
And and I'll defer to the other commissioners and to Debbie if this decision needs to be made today. Why then it does sound like that the group that Gordon and Jeff worked for is probably the better option moving forward. With the fact that we have some unknowns with the Cook Group, so I'll, I'll defer that decision to the other commissioners and Debbie there. But I'll vote with in supportive either way.
Mr. McCready.
With ta- uh, commercial tax evaluations happening every five years, they happened last year?
Uh, no, but that that's what part of this is, is the audit part, is they're gonna be giving us, this was something that was requested by you guys. They're gonna be giving us a factor every year, what we should be raising in particular, so motel should go up five percent.
Right.
Yeah, that type of stuff, so that's, that's part of this.
Okay, so we're, we're leaning towards trying to get to that yearly reevaluation. How about that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
But we wouldn't be paying the seventy-five or eighty-five thousand dollars annually to the, this is what they're gonna set up for now, that you're gonna give us that, that.
That is for this year only. That's the price for this year only. It will change, you know, with the cost of whatever housing, um. Coming here for DM, whatever, it, that could change, and the number of properties that we'll be doing every year.
Okay, so this only is specific spot, like this, it's not all the commercial properties, and this is only a section of them.
There's a, there's a thousand sixty that are being audited, which is the, the buildings, and then he'll be looking at the land guide as well to see what, what the land needs to go up.
Okay, so.
But if it's a five year, so her, in the past, we were doing it every five years, so we'd be paying this fee every five years, but we wanna do this every year.
Right.
So we're gonna pay this fee every year now?
Yes. So before, when we did it in the five-year cycle, I think the last one was like a hundred and fifty thousand. So if you break that down into five years, then, you know, so that's what it would be, but this is because we're doing this every year. And we've added that extra ask of them to give us a, for every year to see what we need to increase.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
So just clarified here, we were expected roughly a hundred and fifty thousand for a five-year period tax evaluation.
And I think we went, I think we went over that, because we asked him to do some extra ones because of the number of pills that we had. Uh, we had, we added some extras into him that were along the highway, that weren't done as commercial, so he picked up all of those too in that year.
So with them ga- gathering the information yearly. We're, we're just below a hundred thousand per year? Estimate, are are in this contractual agreements, are we not estimated they would carry this same information year to year? And it would make it cheaper for them? Because they would have to vote less time?
Well, they do, but I mean, they still have to go out and look at the properties. They still have to do a sales comparison approach, a conscious approach, and an income approach on all the properties. Commercial, you don't just do a uh, sales. Do all of them. So there's more than just writing up the appraisal.
All right, go ahead.
Thanks, man.
Yes, so with with this added information, I feel comfortable going with uh Debbie's suggestion, because it is not equal to what we want. And what we asked for, we asked so that the people weren't getting these huge jumps and such. So with that in mind, I will make a motion to accept a bid from the Appraisers, Inc. In the amount of seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars, seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and it is within budget.
I'll take that. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner McGann, and a second from Commissioner Hadeen.
Uh, another question for Debbie. So does this mean that we're going to be putting out um the, the same type of uh ask for, excuse me, the contract at the appraiser yearly?
That's, I don't know.
It's totally fine, pursue.
But who's that?
That was Bill.
Oh.
Couldn't hear.
I couldn't hear you there.
But like, Bill, I have a comment too. Bill, you have a comment?
Who? Yes, my only other question, is this for a one-year service? We're just signing a contract for one year, so that if we are not happy, we can redo this next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and and the other part of that, Debbie, was, is it, you said these are due by mid-May? Is it, is it, is it? Or, I I just don't know, but is this, is this late in the season? I would, I would have thought so. So next year, if we do come back to, maybe we'd see this in like January or?
Yes.
Or later? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and then maybe just take note of the questions we have for the other appraisers, so we can get on the go there. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That is.
Thank you, Debbie. Next on the agenda, thank you, Debbie, thank you, is the Modern Community Childcare Grant Contract amended agreement. So, students, a box.
Commissioners, this is for your consideration. I don't believe a contract made its way into the, in into the agenda packet, but it's a simple one. This was the original childcare grant. The childcare grant um was a two thousand, two hundred thousand dollar award. That was given to the Modern Childcare Group, um, Rob Walkers Group. Came back to the commission, uh, commission administration office, but the two plus. One would be an amendment of the contract period from one year to two years to allow two years to spend the funds. You're supportive of that first contract amendment, relatively simple, gives them a longer period of time. The second item that he would like, that he would, that the comment and and myself wouldn't necessarily agree to. He would like one hundred percent of the funds be provided. We push back and would like it to be a ninety-ten split, and the original contract is currently listed as a ninety percent.
Yep.
Of the grant, and then a ten percent follow-up one, once he completes all the obligations, uh, reporting obligations. Uh, from his position to make sure I represent it fairly, just because he's not here, he he feels that it would be great to have that additional twenty thousand dollars upfront. My, our position, I think it would be helpful to encourage the compliance of the contract, demonstrate the expenditures, follow up with the private report. Uh, we have a lot of buy-in from individuals when they had more, more money to gain, uh, when they came back, and so we saw more compliance with the report requirements. So those are the two requests. Uh, commissioners could choose to approve both of them. They could just choose to approve one of them. It's your folks' choice.
I'm sorry, I didn't see Heather in the first. Brian?
Um, I'd move to amend the rural county sub grant contract as follows. Uh, section three contract period will be amended to a two.
And. It's got a motion for, Mr. Martinez? Oh, we got a second already?
Oh, not fast enough.
Second, and then did you have a comment?
I did, yeah. I was gonna make the motion. I was also gonna include section two, the contract amount. I, I'm fine with with the one-term payment. I know that uh, this particular group has been doing great work in the past. I don't think we've had any issues with any of the uh, contracts or or any of the work they've done previously. And I'd be supportive of the hundred percent ask personally.
Um, Mr. McGann?
Uh, yes, with that said, I, I, uh, and the reports that this group has provided on a yearly basis has been exceptional. Has gone above and beyond what many, what we've been requesting. So I would like to make a substitute motion where I move to amend rural county uh sub grant contract. As follows, section three contract period will be amended to a two-year term, and section four uh contact amount will be amended to a one-time payment.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, so anyone discussion? Mike?
Is there still a reporting requirement, even though with a one-time payment?
Yeah, there's still a reporting requirement.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, and if we don't get that reporting back, we can't go for another grant, so I mean, it's important for the county to get that equation back. And, and go ahead.
Quick comment on the the substitute there. So first question, does the extending of the contract period go against anything on the GOYO grant?
We, we con- okay, sorry. Uh, we contacted them about both of these asks. They said they're, they're fine with whatever the county would like us, uh, whatever the county would like to do for the flow-through. I didn't note that to them. I said, I don't wanna be amending your folks' contract or have a county do that if it wouldn't be appropriate. They said, no. Uh, the county is facilitating the contract, and so they're fine with both the terms. Uh, as the contract stands now, which is one year, ninety-ten, or if we adjust it to two years, or or a hundred percent, uh, grant. Regardless of whichever motion goes forward, uh, we need one more piece of the motion, which is the amendment. It'll be drafted by the Grand County Attorney's Office and executed accordingly.
And it's, and it will be executed through the Grand County uh office and accordingly.
Okay, so now there are, then the motion, I'm assuming?
Or it's just an addition.
Yeah.
Then just discussion of that, so there's two parts. So one is that right there, and second is, is ten percent security seem like a, a too large of an ask right there? I mean, lots of things could happen, and ten percent security on this two-year, um, doesn't seem like it's too big.
Okay, well, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think this is a very proven, very beneficial um group. Uh, personally, they actually operate right across the street from me, and I think that that's where this is gonna happen, and and I think they've been massively beneficial to the, to the county. I I I appreciate all the work that they've done. Uh, I think the reporting has been exemplary. I mean, I mean, Rob provided us yearly reports, even when we haven't. Eated them necessarily and very detailed. Um, and I, I see it as just a article of faith that he's doing great work. That that organization is doing great work for the county. Uh, I'm very much expecting to continue so, and having all the funds available at his disposable. At his dis- at their disposal, disposal, disposal when they're uh working on this sort of uh capital project, I think would be the, the project.
The only, the only thing that kind of seems contradictory is if he's asking two years to spend it, but then wants all of it upfront. That was the other part that I didn't have. That was the other part that I can kind of be troubled with as well.
The bank account.
Can be collecting interest on it as well.
Yeah.
You know, cause money's coming from us, so we can, our, leave it in our, you know, the twenty thousand dollars in our account. A lot of times, um, you know, when you have contractors and stuff, they bill you and then you pay them later, it's not, you don't pay them front either, you know, your contractors that come in for it, so. I'm not gonna go any away, I think it's, it's fine, but we're gonna go ahead and call for a vote in the substitute motion. Um, that Mary had given and Jean had seconded, so all in favor of that substitute motion, put your hand.
Still with reporting requirements.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, and those both? So we have, the motion passes five to two with Winfield and Martinez.
In our possession.
Okay. All right, next one is the America two fifty.
Is that, into, don't we have to originally, don't we have to vote on the substitute?
No, we, we voted on the amended substitute motion, which was Commissioner Heather's motion to include both terms.
Our, our mayor's actually.
And if it failed, then we would have gone back to the original motion. Right?
Correct.
Okay. We're all learning together.
It's all good, Melanie.
All right, so the America two fifty resolution, I just had this on the agenda because we had, um, that presentation from. America two fifty, or the Utah two fifty, uh, two meetings ago, and we forgot to put it on the agenda for last. Meeting, and so we kind of mentioned that we would do this. And go ahead, Trish.
I'll move to approve the America two fifty resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Trish and a second from Mike, that we have in discussion.
Thanks for bringing it up.
All right. Come in, John.
Are we all working on our, uh, uh, walking or rolling two hundred and fifty miles this year?
I'm working on rolling.
Rolling, right.
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll get my rolling too. And then do we, so once we do this, I just have a question, so we put in this resolution and then we need to form a committee, are we? Uh, Department head of committee or?
Good question, Melanie.
To recognize this, but then we need a committee, so I guess at that point in time, anybody out there listening? If you want to be involved with the America two fifty celebration, I think that I will reach out to the chamber because they're doing that Utah, um, celebrations, maybe we can combine it. And so I will talk to the chamber about that, or Brian remembers too, on that, or maybe we can integrate with the, um. The model, uh, celebration and, and, uh.
Were you even, maybe the, uh, fair?
County fair, yeah. Reach out to the chamber, Mel, and you don't get, uh, yeah, we can reach, yeah. So either one, or they can combine together for this, um. Okay, so we have a, um, vote from Trish and a second from Mike, all over in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And Commissioner McGann is absent, so we have, uh, six, zero, both of them, again, absent. And the resolution. All right, it is six o'clock. So we have to our second round, so if you need to be heard, so if you have any of the, the chambers that like to be heard. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Day, come on up. You can stand on the podium, you can sit at the table, we have microphones overhead now, so. Don't worry about.
Hey, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
So used to it.
My name's Randy Day, I live in this county, have for some time. As I can remember. Um, I'm greatly concerned about. The reservation system in our parks. And how that has affected our bottom line in this county. There go, I believe that is a missed opportunity by our county and the parks. And I believe that has a direct relationship, whether or not all of the percentages that we've fallen, but certainly a good degree. Uh, tied with the misuse of our TRT money. And the reservation system, our businesses are hurting. And part of that is certainly related to the national economy, but part of it is related to. Our missteps in this county. I would like to ask you to please do everything you can to get our parks to run on a regular schedule, open the door, we're open for business. I would like to see us as a county use that TRT money to put that out there, that Grant County is open for business. That we are here to serve the tourism, tourism as it comes. We will take care of those issues such as today earlier. I think you did an excellent job with our ambulance service. I very seldom have used it in my lifetime, but last year I did. It was excellent for my family, it was excellent for our county, I've seen them do time after time, great rescues within these public lands that pay no taxes. And them, and little, uh, taxes, the felt money that comes in, is almost a joke. I never kick a penny, I always stop and pick up a penny, otherwise, I may stop if they quit printing them. But I know one thing. We don't get enough money from the federal government for the services we supply to the non-taxpayers in this county that have land that is single-use. Commercial property called Arches National Park and Canyonlands National Park. They are commercial enterprises, however poorly ran. They affect this county and should be paying taxes. That's all I'm gonna say about that, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All right, do you have any other citizens to be heard? Yep, come on up.
My name is Pete Gross, um, I understand, I'm not sure if I have this clear, you might be entertaining a proposal. To study further, um, the, the impact of the time entry Arches reservation system. I'll start out right at the beginning, I don't like reservations. I like to just go somewhere to eat, go hiking, whatever, without have, you know, spontaneous. In the nineteen eighties, friends of mine and I, we were hiking in the subway in Zion National Park before it was even discovered, I had friends who were going to the wave on BLM land. You know, near Page and, and Canal, before anybody knew about it, now there's a lottery system. But I totally understand why, it's like, there's so many people, I'll give you some examples, Kevia National Park. You need a reservation to, for the Cadillac Summit Road, Carlsbad Caverns, you need a reservation to go visit there. Glacier National Park, going to the Sun Road, need a reservation. Aliaka National Park, same, Mount Rainier, Paradise and Sunrise Corridors, reservation, Rocky Mountain National Park, need a reservation. To enter, Shenandoah Old Rag Trail, requires a reservation, Yosemite, Half Dome, Half Dome. And Horse Tail Falls Trail, to hike those, you need to enter a lottery, get a permit. Zion National Park, Angel's Landing Subway, which I mentioned earlier, Angel's Landing, I used to work out of Hurricane, we were based out of there. We go hiking Angel's Landing anytime we wanted, now you need a reservation, but I understand why, there's places where, you know, it's like, it's like a. One-way trail, not even like a, you know, one-lane road. Um, what else is there gonna say? Oh, also, I've spent much, much of the last forty-five years. Running rivers in the Western US, Middle Fork of the Salmon, you have to have a permit. It's, and it's a, a reservation system or lottery, um, and also the camps. In order to not just randomly hope you can get a campsite, they have assigned camps. Main Fork of the Salmon, from Corner Creek to Vinegar Creek, same thing, Hell's Canyon, need a reservation. Lower Salmon, I've done probably close to a hundred trips down the Lower Salmon. I'm not sure, I haven't been out in a few years, but, um, Laverne Drew Singh, who used to be the River Ranger, he really, really tried hard not to do reservations, and it worked most of the time. But I was on a number of trips, be there's a section of river above Cougar Canyon. A whole bunch of good camps, and then seven miles, almost no camps. We lost as group after group stacked up looking for, for a place to camp, and it sucks when you got a group of twenty-four people and you can't even find a camp. Oh, see, okay, so other, Rogue River Oregon, reservation, lottery system, yeah, but. Lador, Green River, uh, Deso and the Green River, in Canyonland National Park, both the green and Colorado side, you have to have a permit. And it requires a reservation, Rocky Mountain National Park, Bryce Canyon National Park, again, reservations, so thank you for your time. I reluctantly very much support the time entry reservation system for Arches National Park, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other citizens be heard? Okay, if you don't want me. Superintendent Pace, do you want to speak now, do any citizens be heard, or you're just here to listen to us?
Uh-huh, I'm, I'm happy to speak, or I was kind of gonna be available for any questions that came up during the discussion, whatever you think is against.
Okay. If you, if you don't have anything that you just want to comment, and you're just here for questions, then we'll just wait, but if you have comments, that'll, then I.
Good evening, uh, Lena Pace, Superintendent, Arches National Park. Um, just a few brief comments, uh, I understand that you are, uh. Looking at commissioning an additional study of the impact of the socioeconomic impact of timed entry on the county and the city. Um, I do want to put forward that we had an independent contractor do a study already of the socioeconomic impacts. Um, that is publicly available, and I made it available to the commission in the past, uh, that was a thorough, well-done study as far as I could tell, um. And it was done by the same, uh, group and the same individuals that did the Trails to Tomorrow study, uh, which tells me that they understand Grand County and the context in which. Uh, the timed entry system is occurring. Um, I do want to say that, um, we're happy to work with the county to bring that contractor back in to answer any questions about it. If there's any gaps or, or issues that, that the commission has with that study, we're, we're happy to work with the county to make sure that those gaps get filled. Um, but we do have a, an existing study that's, that's looked into this very issue, um, and I think did a very thorough job of it. Uh, I also just want to commend the county and the Chamber of Commerce in particular for all the collaboration that they've done with us, we've had the opportunity. Over the last few months to work with the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce and several commissioners and working with, um. The businesses in town to really try to be responsive to the needs of its community. We've made several key changes to the reservation system for the twenty twenty-five pilot, including, uh, moving advanced reservations out from a three-month purchase to a six-month purchase timeframe. Uh, starting to work on, uh, looking into a bike access, a bike, uh, path through Utah Raptor into the backside of Arches, that's been something that's come up regularly from. From members of this commission as well as the state of Utah. Um, and we have paused for six weeks of this summer, paused the requirement reservations during a low period of time when there's lower visitation generally, when the weather gets really hot in July and August. Um, those are all directly related to requests that have come from this community and this commission and, and members of the business community here in Moab and Grand County. Um, and I think we've demonstrated in the national park that we are, uh, and I am, uh, dedicated and committed to working with this county to make sure that we, we find a. A, a way of operating this reservation system that works for everyone, so I appreciate the, the questions and the comments, and I appreciate that you all want to understand this issue better. I'm happy to work with you on that and would, uh, love the opportunity to bring in the contractor that did the work, uh, already, so that we're building on work that's already been done rather than, uh, reinventing the wheel, so. Happy to answer any specific questions about the reservation system related to the discussion tonight, but I wanted to make sure that I was here, uh, able to speak with you all today, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, last call, or citizens be heard? The one, all right, so we'll move on, the number seven?
We'd like to. Uh, since it's after six, and so everybody's had the opportunity to speak on Arches Reservation. And since we do have a person here spending their time outside, I, if possible, I'd like to move, uh, item eleven to. There's some problem with that.
Is there anybody?
Give us a second. That was the discretion of the chair.
The discretion, chair, chair says, okay, we can move it up. I had people tell me I have to do that. I think it's, because everybody did, I'm okay with it because we had both of our, both of our, yeah, yeah, heard, but yeah. So I think that I feel like the majority, anybody that wanted to comment on that was able to comment.
Bill has a panel.
Oh, Bill has a panel, okay, go ahead, Bill.
Actually, if we're gonna move it forward, I'd like to make the motion that we, um, fund this Kim Gardner Institute. Study to further, um, expand.
Yeah, let me move it forward and then we will, then I'll call on you first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna pause on number seven, and we're gonna move to number eleven on our agenda. The number eleven is a request for a study on Arches National Park Reservation System Impacts in Grand County. And Commissioner Murphy's was, did you have anything you wanted to say on it first, or should?
Yeah, I can, I can put a little bit of statement right here. And so I was just gonna read this right here, um, I didn't plan on actually going through, I think everybody had a chance to view the report and kind of see what we had, so I had, wasn't planning on going through it right here. Um, I and many in our community are concerned with the continued downturn in our economy. When elected last year, I promised to do everything I could to shore Grand County to economic strength. I and this community need to understand what's causing this local economic downturn. Many people, including me, are concerned that Arches Reservation System is having an unacceptable, uh, economic impact. Opehensive analysis in this packet raises concerns for me. It tells a coherent story that meshes with the economic reality that we've been, uh, experiencing since reservation system was first introduced three years ago. It draws on the latest data from multiple sources over multiple timeframes, and it shows three things. One, there's been a significant drop in visitation at Arches National Park since reservation system was introduced, especially during the months when reservations are required. Two, is the visitation decline is much greater than seen in parks across the state, the region, and the nation. In fact, over the last three years, Arches National Park has been the third-largest decline of any national park in the country. And then three, and this is coming at a considerable cost to our, uh, community, to our tax base, to our local workers, and to our local businesses. Um, adjusted for inflation, Grand County's tax revenues have now declined through the third straight year. This should concern all of us because it's unsustainable. The county and the city cannot continue to raise taxes to make up for this shortfall. Right, there's been considerable discussion and disagreement about the causes of the local tourism decline in Grand County. From prices to gas, to inflation, to COVID, to the political climate, or to the lack of adrenals. Based on the data and the analysis presented here, I can no longer accept the decline in visitation at Arches as being caused by all things. Except the one thing that was specifically put in place to limit visitation at the park. Uh, none of this comes as a surprise, because this was predicted in the Economic Impact Analysis Commissioned and published by the NPS back in twenty eighteen. Which forecast back then that the reservation system would cost approximately twenty-two million a year in lost spending, which adjusted for inflation is approximately thirty million today. We're now seeing impacts greater than that with Kensee Gardner Publishing Data, that says we've seen a decline in visitor spending since twenty twenty-one, almost a hundred million dollars. It was ninety-five inside of the study there. Um, the Kensee Gardner, uh, Policy Institute is Utah's premier economic and public policy research body. And the state of Utah and the National Park Service rely on quality research to inform this policy. Um, and then this is, that email that I attached right there as well, um, they wrote, we're looking at county-level trends in visitor spending, this comes from the part. The U-, the University of Utah Tourism Dashboard is a much better source than our annual visitor spending. Right, given the size and the scale of these economic impacts, I think it's essential that we ask Kensee Gardner Policy Institute to review and expand on this work. So we are fully aware of the economic impact reservation system is having on our community. The timed entry reservation system has long, has long-term implications for our tourism dependent, um. It is essential that we have independent, up-to-date, high-quality, reputable research, right, evidence, uh, evidence-based guidance.
Okay, and you go ahead and have it, so he's, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I did find the motion now, so, uh, when I get to that point, I will, um, restate my motion a little bit, but. I want to say that I did reach out to the Kim Gardner Institute, and they are aware of the study that was done. That Brian just mentioned by the National Park Service, which I think we, Brian mentioned twenty twenty, if I'm off. Please feel free to correct me, they also mentioned the study that Lena Pace just mentioned as well, and I. I will say that the study that we've seen from Mr. Hancock that came out of our community here. References the Kim Gardner Institute in many places throughout that report, and when I reached out and spoke to the Kim Gardner Institute, I supplied this study to them. And they were extremely impressed with the acronyms.
And they were extremely impressed with the acronyms of it, and they were excited about the possibility of maybe expanding on it and doing some more analytical work to it. They they would be more than willing to come to uh the table with an engagement letter of what that would look like in the future. I do know that the Trail to Tomorrow report that was done and by the people that did do that, I would like to note that although that is a great report that came from those folks, they are still from out of town and out of state. And rather than say that we don't need to further look at this issue, or that we just want to look at it from one certain angle. I believe that the Kim Gardner Institute would be a good opportunity to bring all of these together to where we can come up with a a little bit of everything involved in a study that would put some of this to bed, and I I just don't understand how anybody in this community can be against looking at this further. Uh to to me, to be against looking.